...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Councilman Allen?
Yes.
Law head?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Hillman?
Yeah.
Motion to open the meeting along with the stating of the public meeting notice?
So moved. Check, okay.
Motion by Allen, second by Hillman to open the meeting. Councilman Allen?
Yes.
Law head?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Hillman?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
Yes.
Consideration of petitions and other communications, there are none at this time. Call of the public, there is none tonight. amend the agenda, there are no items to amend. Adopt the agenda, no items to adopt. No minutes to amend at this time. So at this time, I'd like to give the meeting over to City Manager Hendricks with the public presentation, Sharon Street Assessment.
Tonight we have several guests with us to just recap mainly information that we've already presented previously regarding the Sharon Street Assessment. First, we have Michael Sands here with us from Bearcote. He's the project attorney. He will start by briefly summarizing the need that we have to rescind some motions from the previous meeting on April 18th. Next, Brock Hurley is here with us from the CPA firm, and he will go over the cost, I'm sorry, the cash flow analysis. And that was previously presented to the council, and it is in your binders for your review. After Mr. Hurley speaks to us, John Brown, the project engineer, will speak to us regarding the engineer assessment numbers. And then we'll go back again to Michael Sands, and he'll give us an update from where the evening will go from there.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, council, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, us too.
Thank you, public as well.
Thank you, you all.
Like Charlie said, my name is Michael Sands. I'm the attorney of Bearcote Hall in Omaha. I'm serving as the special counsel for the city with respect to the Sharon Street assessments I have been for the better part of a year now. As Charlie outlined, there's kind of two things on the agenda tonight. The first is with regard to the rescission of the prior motion. I'm sure a lot of you were at the April 19 meeting. At that meeting, I was not in attendance, but after the meeting, there was deliberation and confusion as to what actually occurred and whether the motions made with respect to the Sharon Street assessments carried any legal effect. We provided a memorandum to the city. We reviewed the meeting minutes. We reviewed all of the documentation available to us with regard to that meeting. It was our conclusion that the motions made with respect to both the levy of special assessments, and there was a secondary motion, I believe, with respect to the interest rate and the date of levy, were of no legal effect. There is a statutory process in place with respect to levying those special assessments, and that requires the actual passing of a resolution which attaches the schedule via statute or in the statutes, there's no way to levy those assessments just via mere motion. So it was our determination that that levy was of no legal effect, and it was our recommendation moving forward that the first matter of business be that the council rescind those motions. And it's a bit of a catch-22 because it was our conclusion that they were of no legal effect and moot, but just for the purpose of avoiding any doubt moving forward and to avoid any confusion moving forward with respect to what occurred that night, we found that it would be best to simply rescind them and levy the new assessments according to the law. So that is the first matter of business, and I'd just add that it really isn't an option. I'm not sure if it would be suggested, but it's really not an option to just move forward with whatever people think was passed on the 19th. So it's not, you can't say stay stagnant as is. Something needs to be, they need to be rescinded, and something else needs to be passed. And I think that that's at least a baseline that everybody needs to agree to. The second matter of business, and I'll hand it down to Brock, is the actual levying of special assessments. Like I said, the April 19th meeting, it was intended that a schedule and the assessments be levied at that meeting. Obviously, that didn't occur, so this meeting is for that same purpose. And Brock will speak to this, and I'll just say one thing that I think is important, and an issue that everybody can agree on, is that the financial health and the viability of being able to pay that debt as it becomes due for the city is very important. It's not something that should be taken lightly with respect to defaulting on that bond, and I think that that's something that Brock will speak more to.
Good evening. I'm Brock Hurley, CPA. That was called upon to present or look over the cash flows and the finances of the city and looking forward and projecting those cash flows with the debt payments, bond payments that are coming into effect. I believe the first bond payment, I think, is December 15th. It's $50,000 bond payment with interest. And right now, without any assessment, would not appear that the city would be able to sustain itself for any length of time. And I think that's, you know, obviously, the need for the assessments to move forward. The cash flow analysis was based on the prior five years. Obviously, there was some expenses and some other issues, so it's only looking at the audited numbers that I received from the state of Nebraska. With that said, with the engineer's proposed assessment, looking at that over the next 15, 17 years, it's about a break even at best. And that's with that assessment. There was a second assessment looked at, and that would create approximately about a $100,000 negative cash flow to the city, which, it's hard to say, you know, numbers going forward, but would make it rather difficult to sustain, especially with the current debt payments that are coming up.
Is that over the 20 years, $100,000 over the 20 years? Or is that $100,000 per year?
Please, please save your questions.
Okay, I was gonna, I can't ask any more.
That's over 17 years.
We'll respond to questions, I think, during the public hearing.
And that's what I was called to look at, to look at those cash flows, to see, you know, I would say, the viability of the city. But I think there's concerns with, you know, the payments, debt requirements that are required by the city coming up. So that's all I have. I'll pass this back to Charlie or John.
I'm John Brown with Stockwell Engineering. We've been involved with the project since the design and the construction. The total project cost came in a little over $1 million, about $1,520,000. After the project was completed, we were asked to break down the cost and estimate the value of the benefiting utilities and infrastructure to each of the lots. And so that's what we had put together, basically, a letter, a summary, an estimated summary of the total costs for each of the lots and benefiting proportionate share of each of those costs that were distributed to each lot. So we had estimated the storm sewer costs, the sanitary sewer costs, and the concrete street improvements. We included all of the sidewalk and the intersection costs included in the city's portion. All of the asphalt portion was added to the city's portion. Engineering costs were added to the city's portion. So a fair amount of the cost of the project, about $587,000, was assessed to the city, and about $464,000 was assessed to the benefiting properties. So the benefiting properties, then, based on the benefit that they received, based on the frontage of each lot, those costs per foot were assessed to each of those lots.
Thanks, John. And so I'll just speak really quickly with regard to the legal determination that needs to be made or the considerations as part of passing a schedule and levying an assessment. And really, there's one guiding principle for levying special assessments, and that's proportionality. And from, there's no set formula for proportionality. If there was, this would be a lot simpler, obviously. But what we do know from Nebraska case law and some decisions that have come down is that there needs to be a method, and it needs to be applied evenly. This includes, you know, both including people that need to be included or excluding them. You can't include some while excluding others, because obviously, a smaller group of people would be sharing more of the cost. So if they are determined to benefit from the special assessments, they'll be assessed proportionally. And in addition to not having a formula, and there's no, it's ultimately the council's decision on what schedule is adopted and how to levy those assessments. But oftentimes, it's helpful, and in most cases for special assessments, they see outside expert counsel for that, and that's obviously the role that John's played in this. And the reason for that is because he's used a method, which is front footage, which is used in probably 99% of special assessments. And I realize, I'm not as familiar with the other schedule, but that's the method that's used for that. So that is the legal perspective of things with regards to passing this. And I know that during the public hearing portion, we will certainly answer any questions that you or the public has for us.
Does council have any questions?
Yes. I'd like to address what you just said about the front footage.
Sure.
The other schedule is mine, and if you didn't get this, you should've.
I received it. I guess, I haven't spoken to you or, and I, you know...
They are the same front footages. So I used his figures.
Okay, that's good to know. Yeah, I do not fashion myself an engineer, so I don't try to assign the number.
The only thing I did was decide whether we gave some of it to the city or whether we didn't. The front foot, the footage is the same. Actually, in the very first one that we got from Stockwell Engineering, and I'm not saying John did it, but the very first one we got had everybody equally assessed $8,025, because that's what they were proud of. So when that came in, we knew we couldn't do that. So that started a process, and I met with John right over there, and he gave the help figure. So this is all his figure. Second question. Where was I? To the accountant, please. You said that you averaged five years, and you got those figures from the...
Cash flow.
Yeah, five years cash flow, and you got it from the auditors, from the audited figures.
Correct.
Okay. When I first looked at yours, I don't know if you've changed it this time from the first time, but when I first looked at those, I was able to go through and actually, you'd extended the same figures out, which are all of those that came right off of the profit loss that we had. So it was just one year, and then extended, so you've changed that.
The figures?
Yes.
It was based on a five-year average, and then we took that average and extended it on.
Okay.
But it wasn't just last year.
But that five-year average came from, because I got it right off the profit loss statement, or a balance sheet that was the current one.
The...
Same figures. That was produced by our financial team there.
Yeah, the figures I got were from the state auditors, from their financial statements.
From the 2017 audit.
From 2013, 14, 15, 16, and 17.
Okay, that's interesting that they came out the same as what was current for 2018. At the bottom of your page, you have a yellow strip, which is the engineer's proposed assessment, and a green strip, which is mine.
Yeah.
And you have the total there of the $226,000 and the sewer $238,000, I assume, is the sanitary and the storm sewer together, right?
Yeah.
And they go the 18 years and 17 years. That was, and we can go as long as we need to, but that was designed to believe to end at the same time the bond payments did, and if we keep messing around, we'll have to take a year off of that. So the 2016 or 18, 19, et cetera, you have that broken in payments of $14,000, whatever. All of those are even-steven, right? And that's the money that's coming in off the assessment?
Correct.
Okay, where's the interest that's gonna come in off the assessment? That's not in there.
No.
And I mentioned that last time. And that was down to $25,000 a year in the early years. So this is totally not reflective of the money we're gonna have available, because there's $25,000 a year missing.
With the interest?
Yes.
That's if people take it out that far, right?
Well, you, we're assuming that they are by breaking the 15-year payment, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah.
So we can't leave off half of that payment, right?
Correct.
So we would have to...
I don't know if I have the interest on there. I just received the amortized payments.
Well, yeah, but the very fact that it's coming in and we're charging 6%, that would be calculable, if I were...
Correct, yeah.
So those are the two things that I would like to know before. And I just want to double assure that the figures that are mine are based upon John Brown's figures. There's no difference. In the same frontage.
One of the reasons I believe that interest isn't included here is because, and Michael and I spent quite a bit of time talking about this, and that is the city includes interest. Statutorily, we aren't supposed to be making a profit off of the interest.
This we can't. We generate 6%.
We utilize the interest as a means to help make up for our loss from properties that may not pay or that may pay late.
Do you back that, sir?
Yeah.
You've got a figure, yeah.
It's figured in.
No, it is not. It's not there.
No, it absolutely is. You have to account for debt. The whole purpose of the assessments and the interest is that the city can make its debt service payment on bonds.
Exactly.
And you have to account for the fact that not all these assessments are going to be collected, so that is certainly a factor in setting the interest.
Well, but then we could say, well, gee, we don't have to make our payment either. We're not gonna, come on, you set this according to what should be. Sir, would you like to answer my question? Why was that interest not involved? Is it because we gotta send it somewhere else?
The money elsewhere?
Yeah, I mean, if we got $25,000 worth of interest coming in, we're gonna have that big a loss?
So Cheryl, I provided you with the answer from the staff perspective. This is our reasoning. You've shared with us how you would approach the problem. That's the answer.
So I'm not getting an answer of why it's not in there, actually. Okay. I'm just, we have this money, we're trying to figure out if we can pay this, and when we leave out the good share of the money, then obviously, it doesn't look like we can pay it.
Okay, there's no further discussion. It's going to recess. The open meeting right now, and we will reconvene as the Board of Adjustments or the Board of Equalization. Motion to open the meeting as the council is the City Board of Equalization. Yeah, let's take a short break.
I'm gonna, I ask him if he could, if there's any more. While Brock is gone, I have to press the interest, money, interesting, have it here. Covers for those who paid the income.
Doesn't happen.
It's gonna come in, they're gonna bring more interest back now. But not until perhaps it passes into a tax or something else, before the price is reduced and forfeited. So let's, let's fill it, it's what I'm saying, just to try.
Yeah, thank you.
You have to figure it out somehow.
You guys want to? Thank you. You have to share.
Okay, motion. Open the meeting.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
There a second?
One second.
Motion by Allen, second by Nick to open the Board of Equalization meeting concerning Sharon Street public hearing. Councilman Allen, would you please read the public hearing rules?
Yes. You guys hear me okay? Everybody here, man? Okay. The rules for the public hearing. Tonight, the council will conduct a public hearing for purposes of approving the argo license and for purposes of approving the Sharon Street assessments. The process of taking public comment during a hearing is different than the process for call of the public. Tonight, the call of the public will be tabled in lieu of the public hearing scheduled for later in the meeting. The public hearing rules slash process. Number one, members of the public are invited to speak for three minutes. Members that have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be called upon first. Once those members have been given an opportunity to speak, the floor will be opened for all members of the public to speak. Number two, members of the public must step up to the podium before speaking. Please do not interrupt others when they are speaking. Number three, please state your name for the record when speaking. Number four, please do not attempt to engage the council or staff in conversation during public comment. Number five, questions asked by the public will be written down by staff. After all members of the public have had the opportunity to give comment, the mayor will entertain a short recess. After the recess, the mayor and council will choose to answer questions that are presented by members of the public. They may instead refer the questions to staff to be answered at a later time. The city council will sit as the City Board of Equalization for the purpose of hearing the Sharon Street assessment matter. The purpose of the Board of Equalization is to fairly and impartially equalize the values of all items of real property in a jurisdiction so that all real property is assessed uniformly and proportionally.
Okay, so at this time, the public hearing is open? We need a motion and second, please.
I made the motion.
Okay, I mean, motion...
Open, lady. Second.
No, maybe.
We're opening the public...
Equalization. It was already motioned by Allen and seconded by me, so we got it both now.
Okay.
Law head?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Hillman?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
Yes.
So at this time, I have Roseanne Hobel Heinrich to address the council.
Hi, I'm Roseanne Hobel Heinrich, and I thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I am one of the new homeowners on Sharon Street. In early 2016, over two and a half years ago, I was asking Kelly about purchasing a lot, and it took him over three months to give me an estimate of the price on what my lot would be. He said he was waiting for the city to decide on the street assessment, the cost of the street assessment. If I knew back in 2016 that the city would end up charging me an additional $25,000 for my lot, I would not be here, I would not have built my house. And in that respect, the city would have lost already the city sales tax my house has generated in the building process. The school, the fire department, and the city will also lose the revenue that my property will generate with the property estate taxes. And it is also my understanding that anyone, that a person can purchase a lot at Wygant for approximately $46,000, a one-acre lot, and a corner lot would cost $48,000. My lot is being assessed over close to and over $42,000, and that is far from one acre. I thought the city was here to promote new housing and to bring more families into town, but if we're going to be greedy and charge an overly excessive amount for these lots, nobody will build. Would anyone here pay $45,000 for a lot and property? I have one question that was brought up that can be answered later. This project has been going on since 2015. Who is paying the interest on this project since it was completed? Is that being charged to us as landowners also? And is there a time limit on how long it takes? And is there a time limit on how long it takes for the assessment to be completed on these lots? We are over three years. This is all I have for now. Thank you.
We have, what else? Bruce Curtis. Attorney for Kelly Hodson and Norman Mann.
Thank you, good evening. I had submitted, or we had submitted on behalf of Hodson's, or let me back up. A bit of an introduction, I'm sorry. My name is Bruce Curtis. I've been practicing law in Plainview since the seventies. I have ten lawyers in my family. I'm talented, find any family that has more. We're scattered all the way from here to Houston. I've been city attorney in Plainview since the seventies, over twenty-three years, twenty-some years. I've dealt with a few of these in the past. I can tell you that foreclosure of special assessments in the future, if they're too big, is unpleasant and you never get your money. So you do want to try and create things that people are willing to tolerate. But my first and point other than the introduction. We had submitted about twenty pages of objections and schedules and descriptions and arguments. Has the council seen those? Does everybody have copies? If I only have three minutes, I can't really read twenty pages. Does the council see them? So you have. You've seen the objections that were submitted and you've seen the schedules?
Say yes or no.
I saw one, I saw one and Kelly gave me.
Well, there was.
I've seen one that got here with me. That was a two-page.
Signed by me that had schedules attached to it in the nature of those that you have. If you don't have them, I would hand them out.
They were emailed to the council.
Well, if they haven't, and if you wait them, I can hardly argue that what's it? Well, I will leave them on the table for you. The case I did with my three minutes. Well, one of my points, then, and it seems to have been handed out, a couple of questions that were raised in the address and raised for legal issues as a hearing. Has the council been able to see these, to have some thoughts and comment on them?
Yeah.
All right. Well, then, three or four of my issues are legal issues. I'm not going to argue those here, they aren't really for you folks, but I hope your council will talk with you about them and advise you on them. I think there are three or four relatively serious legal issues that could be problems and could make this process subject to appeal if it can't come to an agreement. Secondly, I would argue to you that I know there's been a question in the past of a council member having a conflict that somehow prohibited voting, and I would suggest to you there are no such conflicts in this situation and all members can vote if they please. And finally, I want to point out to you, and to you later, be sure you look at the benefits for making assessments. That's what the law requires. Council has suggested proportionality, that's another way of saying benefits, I get it. But strictly technical, it is not necessary. And benefit is the question. And as Lady just mentioned, a $25,000 assessment on a $10,000 lot is not a benefit. If the property don't work that, what you are going to get is nonbenefit.
Tom?
Let me point out to you, I'm representing two people. How about you give me another pair of minutes?
The rules are the rules. You have three minutes to speak like everybody else. Thank you. And we have a couple of things over there where you get to.
You don't care!
No, no one defend me, I can defend myself. Well, then, let me point out to you that your hearing is far, and you really don't want to hear from anyone. You haven't given me even an opportunity to speak to those documents I gave you. You have legal issues, you have problems, and you very likely are subject to appeal of this material. You obviously don't want to hear from the public, and your structure is made it so you will not. So good luck with the appeals.
Are you still accepting public comment? Just okay? Here's a thought regarding the $109,000. Michael Church. Problem representative. Just a thought regarding the $109,000 shortfall according to law heads. $109,000?
Is it about $100,000?
Anyway, it's a shortfall, thank you.
Yeah, it's a shortfall. Fifteen years, about $7,000 a year.
And I don't know what the shortfall is at, so I don't know what it's been.
Is that the end of the month? Does anybody else want to speak before moving on?
I have one question. Dan Berens, I'm the resident here to... My major asset in my life is in this lot. My question is, if the assets are too high to deem sellable to Norman and Kelly, who are professionals as far as development projects go, lots of them are too expensive, and they feel it's better in their better interest to walk away from them. Are you guys prepared to go through all the foreclosures for the assessments on these lots? Are you prepared to put on your real estate hats, try to sell those lots for enough to gain it back? My only question is, wouldn't it be better to let the professionals do their job and you guys do your job, not trying to put too many hats on? We got into this project by trying to try and put too many hats on to begin with. My only suggestion is back off, make the lots sellable, make sure they're sellable. As far as $100,000 a year, everyone in this room knows how we can come up with a whole lot more than $7,000 a year paid for that. Thank you.
Any other public discussion? Council discussion?
Maybe I can go right on from that since that's $100,000. And I'm not sure, I'm looking at this. If you look at the yellow and the green, is that number in parentheses, what we have shortfall odds? So would both have, both of them have a shortfall?
The bottom number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So from the engineer, we have a shortfall of $26,000 the first year, and in mine, we have a shortfall of $29,000. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So that's only $3,000 difference.
Yeah.
But you're not adding interest in on either one, is that correct?
True.
So if we had, if everybody did pay that interest along with, if there was an interest, then we're not going to get any interest for 2018. 2018's gone. So by the time we get it assessed, we're gonna have to cover that. But the next year, we will get interest. If it is that 25 or 26,000, that pretty well takes care of it, doesn't it? If we get it. That takes care of the shortfall. You've got a shortfall of the 20, between 25 and 29,000. So if we get between 25,000 and interest income, that pretty well takes care of it. We only got a $3,000 difference, so, right?
Cheryl.
Yes?
Cheryl, we're in the middle of a public hearing right now.
Well, you just asked me if there's anything from the council? Is that what we're doing?
Actually, we're... There's a... I'd like to respond to this, but I asked what...
Okay, you.
Originally, what we were about to do was take a break and prepare an answer.
Okay. Let's don't do what we did on the nineteenth and go out and call people. Let's don't do that. We should be prepared. Yes, we should be prepared.
We're going to recess for five minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We're in recess. I, I move we have to go into executive session and get this over with as quickly as possible.
No, we can't do this.
Okay, then recess.
Okay. Cheryl, some of the questions that you have, and I'll let you go back to asking some more. But just so that you understand, the only thing that Brock has done for us is this cash flow analysis. So his familiarity with the city's finances are somewhat limited. He did a thorough research, he did go back to the audit reports going five years back, but he's not going to be able to answer every question about the city's finances to a T tonight. So he's gonna be limited in the responses he can give you. One of those things that you need to keep in mind is that when he did the cash flow analysis, he just looked at our budget as a whole. He didn't look at proprietary funds, he didn't look at restricted funds. He just looked at the big picture with our budget. So he didn't look at the impact that this would have on our street funds. He didn't look at the impact that this would have on, you know, on our parks and rec. And so there are a lot of finer budget picture questions that are still yet to be. And so there are a lot of finer budget picture questions that are still yet to be answered. And so as you're going through this, understand that he is limited in what he can answer for you tonight. Before we get back into that, um, a lot of your questions, I think, are more well-suited for the discussion piece of this evening, and I wanted to go back to some of the questions that were asked during the public hearing by members of the public. Um, Mr. Curtis asked if the members of the council had received the complaints that were filed by Mr. Hudson. Um, the day that Mr. Hudson filed those complaints, they were scanned, copied, and emailed to all of the council members. All of the council members did receive them, and they were also forwarded to special counsel. Special counsel has given legal advice to the council on that, and that legal advice is, um, reserved and privileged information. Um, the, there was a question regarding who's paying the interest on the project. All of the interest on the project is being paid by the city. And if you know much about interest, um, interest is a very large part of the project. So when you consider that five hundred and eighty-seven thousand that the city's paying, uh, you add the interest to it, the city is paying the vast majority of this project. I would also point out that, um, Mr. Hudson took place, or took part, in the entire assessment process. Only property owners who wanted concrete got concrete. And so those properties that are assessed for concrete, which is the most expensive part of the assessment, got it. So, uh, properties that are assessed more are assessed more because they got benefits that they wanted. I think that's all I have right now, Michael.
The only other question that I had written down, that I don't think Charlie addressed yet, was, I think, is, was it Ms. Hydrick asked whether there's a time limit for these obligations? The answer to that is, is yes. With respect to the street improvements, it's fifteen years via the statute. Uh, and with, for the other improvements, it's, uh, it's the length of the bond. Um, is the time limitation that the city has to pay it off?
I believe her question, what she wants to know, is there a prime limit from the time that project is finished to the time you guys have to set the assessments?
No, it's, it's, the city could never-
So you could wait ten years to set the assessments?
They'd default on their bond if they did. But yes, you could, in theory. Um, it's, it's largely, if you, if you waited ten years, then, you know, you, you'd only be able to assess for the, the amount of time that was left on the bond for the other improvements, but no, there's not, you don't have to assess within a, you know, a year or two years, for example. So no.
Okay, moving on then, we are looking at the resolution, twenty-eighteen, dash fifteen.
Do we get a discussion here before we do that? Because I don't see us doing a resolution on figures, does the council actually vote or decide on which specific items? And I don't think that's settled. I may be wrong, but-
We've got to close the public hearing first, please. Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion by law head, second. Motion by law head, second by Allen to close the public hearing. Councilman Lawhead?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Yonah?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Strong? Yes. Okay. I have a forming resolution, number twenty, dash fifteen, to rescind the two motions. Would you entertain a motion, please?
This is a resolution to rescind, is that what we're doing?
Yes, sir.
Can you read that so we know, so we just have it on the record? I'll be happy to do that if you want me to.
Yeah?
Whereas the city council and the mayor sitting as board of equalization held a special public meeting on April nineteenth, twenty-eighteen, at six-thirty at the City of Crofton Auditorium, twenty-eighteen, West Second Street, Crofton. Whereas as the meetings, at the April nineteenth special public meeting, Councilman Lawhead made two motions, and whereas the first motion, as the meeting minutes reflect, was a motion, I don't know what that means, but to approve a schedule which will be the white column using Stockwell storm sewers, sanitary sewers, the same proposed, so it says the same, use Gerald's for the street, which divides the curb and gutter out and gives one-third of the street to the city, with the schedules combined by Lawhead. And that was the definition of where to give credit, the, the figures. Whereas, the second motion at the meeting reflect was motion to step the assessment interest at six percent, the due date adds October fifteenth, motion two, and whereas at the time of the special meeting, the city council and mayor sitting as the board of equalization determined that motion one and motion two carried, and whereas the city council and the mayor held a special meeting on May sixteenth at six-thirty PM at the city auditorium, and whereas the May, I'm leaving some of the dates out if that's okay, or twenty-eighteen. At the May sixteen special meeting, the mayor and city council held an open forum to discuss the legal effect of motion one and motion two, and whereas thereafter, the city council and the mayor determined that motion one and motion two likely did not carry and are of no legal effect, and to the degree they carried or had any legal effect, the motion should be rescinded to allow the city to clarify its procedure for levying special assessments under Nebraska law. Be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the City of Crofton, sitting as the board of equalization, the city council of the City of Crofton, sitting as the board of equalization, hereby rescends, repeals, and annuls motion one. The City of, the City of Crofton, the city council of the City of Crofton, sitting as the board of equalization, hereby rescends, repeals, and annuls motion two. The city council of the City of Crofton, sitting as the board of equalization, hereby declare motion one and motion two to be of no legal effect, as if they have never been introduced or voted upon. So are we rescinding motions or votes? Does it matter?
It's a motion.
Council member, somebody is moving that the resolution be adopted as read, which said motion was seconded by another and upon the cap roll, call, um, voting aye, and then you have to record your votes, aye, no. And, um, we need this to be right. I will make that motion to rescind.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by law head, second by me, to, motion to, uh, pass the resolution to-
Rescind.
Rescind the two motions made at the April nineteenth meeting. Councilman Meek?
Yes.
Yonah?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lawhead?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
Yes.
There's no further discussions. We have before us the two assessment schedules. Stockwell Engineering, Councilman Lawhead.
Now we get to do one more discussion, right?
Yep.
Okay. I have a note, I've made my notes very short, okay? But here's my, here's what I'm looking at. I don't, I have, I'm not just defending my schedule. This is a true belief. Number one, there were promises made at the beginning of this project, and I have the paperwork that shows that Mayor Strong, Linda Webber, um, Nancy, and whoever else was involved in this, had sat down and said, "We would like this street to come together out here." And I remember, and I'm, I'm just talking of what I've heard and what I've investigated. And I remember talking to Will about it because he was planning on zoning, and he said, "One of the reasons we wanted those streets to come together was the safety thing because, and heaven knows we've had enough water. So if that was flood in that creek down here, and we had an emergency out there at the end, well, east end of Luella and Sharon Street, we would have to take an ambulance or a fire truck all the way around out past the cement plant and back in." That was one of the number-one reasons for building that street. That group went to the two developers and said, "Can we do this?" And they said, "Yes." And the paperwork shows that they were told it would be about seven thousand dollars if they put, to put water and sewer, and I think curb and gutter may have been involved. Later, they decided that a storm sewer would benefit that area, and they added another thousand. So the original estimate was eight thousand and twenty-five dollars per lot. There is also a letter that goes to, I believe, Brad Slaughter, who would have been involved in the bonding and the money being appropriated. And he said, "You can set your limit at eight thousand and twenty-five, but you cannot equally allot those because you have different, putting different benefits, problems. So you can make that your top." I don't think everybody understood that, and the first assessment, as I said, and I couldn't find that one sheet, I found everything else, but came out with those new lots assessed at eight thousand and twenty-five dollars. When I came onto the board in December, my first, uh, uh, two years ago, that was before us, and our city administrator said, "We can't do this because we cannot afford to pay all of that cost, so we have to do something different. And we will be okay in the bond in January." Brad Slaughter was here in January, and we approved that million-dollar bond. We appropriated our money to pay a million dollars for that. Okay, so in April, I asked that since I had background in accounting and so forth, if I could work on those assessments. The boards said, "Yes, indeed." In June, I came in with the same figures that the Stockwell engineers had, because I've met with John, used those figures, and said, "Here they are, and we can do so much per foot, and we can break them out, the city can pay ninety percent, or ten percent, or thirty percent, or whatever you want to do, but you have to give me some direction here." What I got instead was, "Well, you didn't break it out, so we're going to call John Brown back in." And then by July, we had another schedule, and, and it's been a fight ever since. And it is not my personal fight, I still stick with what I had proposed. It is up to the council to decide how much we can afford and how much we want back. And, but we have to consider what promises were made to those landowners. Now, I have, one of the things that Charlie gave me at the onset of that was this map, which she herself drew. It has been lots, and these number, or these columns around it are keyed, keyed by storm sewer, curb and gutter, or sewer, et cetera. And guess what? All of those eight lots that are now out are in this one, too. They are also named in the original district that was drawn by the original engineers. John, you weren't in there then, I understand that, come in later. I firmly believe, when we talk about benefit, that the whole two streets benefit, but I would give a little bit, simply because whoever drew the, the original engineer said, "Well, the east, or the west end on that Sharon Street probably doesn't benefit." That goes, and Normie himself told me there was a pretty good bridge out there about halfway, and it was in west. But anything else that's in that center, when you have a storm sewer, people, "That's not about groundwater, Lord knows we've got enough of it now." But every time you have rainwater, it feeds groundwater, and those, those storm sewers are taking that water out of there and putting it down here in the park. So my original assessment, I'd love to see it, but I, I gave in at our April meeting and said, "Okay, we'll use the other one, we'll leave those eight out." I still firmly believe they should be in, and they can be. The sanitary sewer all belongs to Mr. Hudson because that's all his property because Normie had his in already. The concrete street at first held everything. And I said, "I don't think ever, that those people in the concrete section should be paying for a sidewalk that comes down across the storm sewer. Uh, definitely shouldn't be paying for the intersections." And, and Mr. Brown agreed with all that, and, and that was taken out, so that's not fair. So when we talk, people, about the city paying two-thirds, three-fourths of that, um, three-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars of the million are things that we can't assess anyway. So let's don't cloud the water with that. Take it out. There's only seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and ten thousand, I round off a lot, that's in that shared project. And my figure gives three hundred and ninety-three thousand of that to the landowners, and three-hundred-and-seventeen thousand to the city. So when we say the city's paying two-thirds, they're, they're paying less than half of what is, what is actually assessable. The rest of it, we can't assess anyway. So, I said then, everybody talks about curb and gutter, people downtown said, "We paid for our curb and gutter." Good, pull it out. John agreed, pulled, that, that it was on the maps, that we could do that. He pulled it out himself with his figures by simply going to those lots that had curb and gutter, there's still some there that the city paid for that were added to places. Can't get that, that one out there and see whose place it's on, all that. But the curb and gutter was built separately, and then I asked that one-third of the street be given to the city, because that has become a main thoroughfare. Sharon Street is now used as a main thoroughfare. People come into town, avoid the gravel road, and that, they're even talking about, they need speed bumps out there. So, and, and people around town are saying, "We don't mind helping pay for this." Yeah, city's got to pay for it. But I also, at one of these meetings recently, went through six months of the current fiscal year and found ninety thousand dollars income in the accounts that come in for the roads department. I also found forty-five thousand dollars expenses. So in six months, we had forty-five thousand. Yes, we can't spend all on this, but we got some. We had twenty-five thousand dollars we're paying on the end of Second Street, will be over in two years, that's available. And we cannot ignore the interest that's going to come in on it. And we cannot ignore the interest that's going to come in on it. Just... We just can't. You don't ignore when you give the... And the cost, you say... In fact, Charlie just said, "Interest is a very large part of the payment. We can't ignore that." Then we can't ignore coming in either. So we have the money. Sure.
We've had six to eight months of warnings about we're not going to have possibly enough money if we take your assessment. Wyatt, you were talking in terms of $25,000 that we possibly get guaranteed. I'm just curious. You're very confident about this.
I am.
But why are all the professionals that deal with money and things saying this?
I... I've said this to him. I've repeated things that I've heard, meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting. And I got it. And I'm going to say the same thing, that I have legitimate concerns with either assessment. I'm very nervous about either assessment. I'm very nervous about the city going forward. It is very easy to sit back in those seats. I'm a lifelong resident of Proctor, and it's very important to me that this city keeps going. Lifelong, okay? It's very important to me. Let me talk. It's not yet lifelong. It's very important. I unfortunately have to wear two hats. Okay? So that is my concern. And I have yet to really hear concrete evidence. I've heard a lot of things, but I'm... I just, as a board member, I'm very nervous going forward that if we're talking five years, ten years down the road, the ramifications that these other people have to deal with if we're... And I want these lots to be... to go. I want them to be... I want the assessments to be low. Who on this board does not want the assessments to be low? That's a ridiculous statement. If you ever make that, that is a lot. We want the assessments to be low. We want the lots to be affordable. That's ridiculous. But we also have to look at the other side. That's what I'm...
And I...
That's my two cents.
Yep. I appreciate that, Tom. So may I ask... May I answer part of your question of why... Why I have not proven this? I wish I could.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah. Because I just asked a question, and what did I get for an answer?
I know, Cheryl, but that... Because you can't really give an answer for some reason. That's my concern.
Well, I asked the question of these people, "Why is that $25,000 interest not in?" And they say, "Because we might have to work..."
It's not concrete, is it? And we have other places...
Yes, it's concrete.
Obviously, we have other places money that could possibly go away.
Okay. Hey, let me ask you something. If you have a lien on your property, and it says that you will pay so much principal and so much interest, are you going to refuse to pay the interest? We're planning on...
I won't. But guess what? We have people that don't pay their water bills. And then, guess what? They get shut up all the time. I can show you the list. And they need water to go to the bathroom.
Listen to my question. You're counting on the principal payment, but not the interest payment.
You have good faith, and I understand.
No, you're not listening, Tom. You're counting on the principal payment, but not the interest. Why would you separate the two? You still didn't catch what I'm saying, did you? Why would you separate those two?
I just want to make...
Okay.
Just one... No, no.
But because you're not answering my question, why would you separate the principal from the interest?
Okay, you wouldn't.
Okay. So if you're going to count the principal in, you've got to count the interest in.
That just... That doesn't mean we're going to make it. That's all I'm saying. And that was my... I'm just trying to get all the figures.
Okay.
That's to voice all your arguments. I want to just...
Yes, then I... I just... I want that.
That's okay.
I want that. I want one more. I've got one more.
I'd like to hear everybody else's comments.
Yes.
Not just yours, and not just mine?
Okay.
That's what I'd like to hear.
Ability to sell the lots. I just made sure less than... That's already been covered. And you've said that. The lower the assessments, the more we're going to sell. Yes. So, um, that's primary. The... But here's the thing. You know, Mr. Hudson, Mr. Tramp, now their lawyer, has said quite frankly that if those are not possible to pay, they can walk away from them, and the liens can be foreclosed.
So here's my question. If we adopt your schedule, Kelly Hudson's okay with not going forward with any legal ramifications?
I might have mentioned that a minute before.
Really, sir? I will tell you this.
Yeah, he told me.
Out of all due respect, I am in charge of keeping the meeting in order. I'm not trying to limit you, sir, in your speaking. So being disrespectful is really... That's not very...
No, he said that...
There is a much higher chance, if her schedule was adopted, that Hudson would not protest further.
Okay.
There is a much higher chance if you adopted one of the schedules we submitted, which brings in about as much money, that it would go away even better. I don't know if you guys even know what's in those schedules.
That's what he know. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Okay, so let me... So let me... I'll be done. One more point, and I'll be done. Whatever you want. I said yes because Kelly told me that as bad as he didn't like it, he might be able to live with it. That was a long time ago. So... But, um, here's the thing. And I pointed this out before, and I'm sorry if I'm repetitive, but it's a fact, that the difference in those two schedules is $70,000 total. I don't know where this $100,000 shortage comes up. Maybe over... Because he's counting interest in, or cost of interest also. But the... Let's talk principal only. It's $70,000. In a fifteen-year schedule, this is between $4,000 and $5,000 a year, and as Dan said, it's a podium. We can find... The city can find that. A $2,000 house will bring in $1,000 real estate taxes. So that only takes five built, and three are done.
$200,000.
$200,000 houses, yes. Will bring in $1,000. Most of those houses out there are going to be more than the $2,000. We could, I think... I'd have to ask the lawyers, but I think we could say, "Yeah, the first $1,000, the very house is going to be dead hold towards those assessments." Could we do that?
With respect to the property tax?
Yes.
It'd be, uh... I think that has to do with internal processes, the financials. I honestly don't know the answer to this.
Whether we could just say that as a... Just as a resolution within the city. We're going to take $1,000 of each of those and put it on a...
That's something I don't know.
Okay.
I'd have to look into it. I don't want to give you...
Thank you. Yeah, I don't know. I didn't know. But the biggest thing here, we're so worried about $20,000, $30,000, $100,000, is the million. So if those people walk away, we pay the entire thing. It's not like, "Oh, we're going to get part of it out of them." No, they don't pay it. They're not going to pay it. And one would assume that nobody wants to do that. But we have to consider it because it has been told to us that it's a possibility. The city will be better off financially with homes built out there. We know that. Taxes for everything, for the schools, for the city. And Will and I were just in a conversation a week ago about, you know, getting new teachers in and getting new coaches and stuff, and he said, "It's really hard. They can't find housing, and you can't get the homes with it. You can't..." We need the home. And I... It's just unbelievable that $5,000 a year is different. And I know that there's people wanting to get in out there, but they're not going to pay exorbitant prices. So you're right, Tom. I've given this over and over and over, and I beat the drum, and, um, I guess that's where I am. So my... Of course, my thing would be... And I goofed up because I just said I make a motion to set the resolution as instead of reading a resolution on the eighth nineteen. So it's got to be a resolution. So somebody handled that, knows what they're doing. But I did say resolution. I just didn't read it. We needed somebody to set that out right and straight. I'm in favor of my schedule or anything that can be done off of it. I would even prefer that the storm sewer was shared with those eight lots, and all of that can be done. What we've got to do is make the schedule.
Can we bring something into the resolution after, schedule-wise, after we adopt it legally?
If we know what is going to be done with it.
Can you ask if you can amend it later on?
You are... You are currently in discussion about the resolution. Now is the time to make any amendments to the resolution. Once it has been adopted, then we go forward with carrying out the resolution. It is my understanding...
It's not preferable. What you... At this point, the resolution says that you sitting as the board of the equalization can make those amendments to the schedules that have been proposed now, and you certainly have the right to do that and adopt that moving forward. There are legal ways to amend it, but it's not preferable. And it's likely not a road you want to go down.
Okay.
So how much were you talking about there?
Me?
Yeah.
Let's see if I can find my own schedule. This is the one I sent to an after-meeting because they changed it. Okay. That one in red is mine, and the other are Stockwell's. And there are two columns on the end that are total.
Yeah, I understand that, but you said if we need to add something to it later, we can.
No, I... The original storm sewer that I had included those eight lots.
That's not the current one.
That's...
Is that what your proposal now has? That's what I'm saying.
Well, I'll go with the... I'll go with that one. I don't care. Need to get it.
How much more does that add to it?
Nothing.
None? Okay.
Here.
Show me.
This is the one.
I've seen that the... Have some of these...
That's the one that they're... That's the one they're basing their information on. So that's it. That's the one that's in this folder right here. So it's in your folder. This is just comparison of the two. They're both in here separately.
Well, then I'll have to be sure you... If you're introducing that it's such you get... We get the one in there that you're telling us about instead of having to go back and do such.
You won't. You won't make the motion on the resolution? Are we ready? We've just got... Are you both in town?
Yes, I am. And I have a statement to enter here, too. I still think that I'm involved in a bit of a conflict of interest here regardless of the attorney's opinion and regardless of an opinion I got from the Nebraska Accountability Commission. I checked it out.
And we'd be pleased to review the definition of statute.
Well, I'm not... I'm not going into that. I'm telling you I have the paper, and I don't lie. They said I can vote on this. You're right. But they said I could opt out of it if I so chose. Uh, one of the things that I have determined is going to vote on, it's time for us to end this. And, uh, in order to resolve it, we're going to have to vote something into order. But regardless of which way we go, I wanted apparently knowing that we're taking a risk. We vote the high assessment situation. We run the risk of it falling flat on its face out in the open. If we go for the lower side, we're running the risk that we're not going to return revenues we need to finance the project and pay the bond. So it's a lose-lose situation, sort of. Now, Coach Peterson understands what lose-lose is.
Of course, we can say win-win.
And I think what Brown is... That does really well, and so forth. But we have to resolve this, folks. And I am, like I say, ready to vote on the issues one way or the other as are proposed or as they come forward. But I want you to know that I did go back and look this over to find out that I could participate in it. It doesn't make me feel any better. But I can, and I will. I just want, uh... Councilman Lawhead or Councilwoman Lawhead has the schedule that she has there, and we're all favorable to it or not all favorable to it. At least get the chance to see it. And if we're voting on, I have no problem with going ahead.
And you've seen it, so you have it, right? So you're satisfied that you've seen it, right? It's in here, too? It's in here.
No, it was before that. It's right there.
Something that one other person said to me was, "I would rather take a leap of faith if the money would come in if that's what it takes." And that's what you're talking about, about...
Yeah, but sometimes you take a leap of faith, you crash land, too.
And that's true.
So I'm going to come right back to that. You're not going to get around me on that.
But what I'm saying is, what he said, and I'm saying what he said. He said, "I would rather take a leap of faith than to have a school road."
I call it a calculated risk leap of faith, but they can both go down.
Yep, they can. I agree.
Either way, it's still... You call it win-win. I still think it's more lose-lose. But we have to resolve this for the sake of the community. It's tore us up long enough. It needs to be done.
Is this eighteen... Stand in the April eighteen payments? Are we still within that time limit, okay?
Yes.
That's my statement.
Over with?
Yeah. Anyone else have a statement?
I have nothing else to say. I said what I want to say, so that's on me.
Let's read it then because I'm a big believer in everybody knowing what happened. Be it resolved... If I leave out the 2015 and step ten, is that okay? Be it resolved that Mayor and the City Council, the City of Proctor, sitting in the Board of Equalization, is called section one. Mayor and the City Council, sitting in the Board of Equalization hereby find and determine that improvements made in the Street Improvement District number 2015-1, Storm Sewer District 2015-1, and Senator Sewer 2015-1, all in Proctor, Nebraska, have been completed. None of the property described in proposed assessment schedules damaged by injured or injured thereby, and that schedules or proposed assessments for said improvements, as changed, as heretofore provided, are correct statements of special benefits arising by reason of said improvements. That the lots and parcels of ground in said street improvement 2015-1 and Water District 2015-1 and Sewer have been specifically benefited by said improvements in the amounts as shown on said schedules as changed, and the amounts shown on said schedules as changed do not exceed the special benefits to said lots and parcels of ground by reason of the improvements in said district. And they name the districts again. Section two. There shall be and there are hereby levied against each of the lots and parcels of ground set out in the attached schedules the amounts set out opposite said lots and parcels of ground in said schedules, which schedules will be corrected to reflect any changes heretofore made by the Board of Equalization. Said assessments shall become due fifty days after the date of passage of this resolution, levying special assessments, and any may be paid within said time without interest. But any installment not paid by said date shall draw interest at the rate of six percent per annum from and after the date of passage of this resolution. Is that from now, or is that from the fifty days out?
It starts occurring interest after...
At fifty-one days.
After fifty days. They can pay it without interest.
Right. This says from the date of passage. That needs to be changed.
No. Yeah, the date of delinquency, which is at fifty days.
And from and after date of delinquency at the rate provided by law. But there's a delinquency date. The due date is a delinquency date, and that's fourteen percent, and that goes up.
Said assessments shall become due fifty days after the date of passage of this resolution, levying special assessments, and any may be paid within said time without interest, but any installment not paid by said... but any installment not paid by said...
Oh, any installment not paid, sorry, got it, thank you, I was just being dummed. Said installments for Street Improvement District shall become delinquent in fifteen equal installments as follows, and they are set for September thirteenth, is that fifty days out? Okay, and then one year from date hereof, and then there's one fifteenth, and they go through all of those fourteen, fifteen years, fourteen years. Said installments for Storm Water Sewer District and Sanitary Sewer District shall become delinquent in eighteen equal installments, and that makes the payments a little smaller, get a little more interest, but they can always be paid early. So, then those go from this one eighteen, one eighteenth on September thirteenth, same date, for seventeen years. Section three, all said assessments shall be a lien on the property on which levied from the date hereof and shall be certified by the city clerk to the treasurer of the city collection, and entry upon the proper tax list, that the city clerk mail or otherwise deliver notices of special assessments due to the last known address of the person against whom such special assessments are assessed, or to the lending institution or other party responsible for paying such special assessments at the time, and in the manner provided by law, that the city clerk shall file notice of the assessments, and the amount of assessment being levied for each lot or tract of land with the Knox County, Nebraska Register of Deeds, and that the city clerk shall file a release of assessment upon final payment of each assessment with the Knox County, Nebraska Register of Deeds. Section four, the schedules of proposed assessments with any changes herein, as heretofore directed by the Board of Equalization, shall be attached to and made part of the minutes of this meeting, and are hereby made part of the resolution as it fully stands stated herein. Councilmember Lawhead moved, moves that the resolution be adopted as read, which said motion was seconded by, I guess you have to do all this in the, and, but it doesn't say which schedule.
Public doesn't have the schedule, can you tell us what the total is?
Yes. The total is...
It would be nice if we read it with the total of red for both schedules, so the people in public, as a reminder, what the total is.
Yes, the schedule for the stockwell total is four hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-five thousand, and seventy-six cents. The highest lot is twenty-five thousand, oh-five-one, point seven-seven. You wanna break that down?
Just give them, just to know.
Okay, and the other schedule, my schedule, is three hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-two thou, thirty-two dollars and twenty-seven. And within that schedule, we have covered the storm sewer, which we're both alike, we have the sanitary sewer, we're both alike, and the difference is in the curb and gutter, I spread, separated out, and then I gave a third of the street to the city, and Stockwell's gives all of that to the landowners. So, it's all in that concrete.
And yours was the one currently attached to that.
Say that again.
Yours was the one attached to this.
Well, we have, I guess, I'm, I'm suggesting it's mine, but I don't see that in here, so we have to vote.
You're gonna make two separate motions, and, and Councilwoman Lawhead, I would point out that this resolution considers the eighteen separate installments, so for your schedule, for the motion for your schedule, I would suggest that you make the...
That's right.
If it passes, it's conditional upon changing the schedule to reflect those eighteen...
Because I put mine all into fifteen years.
Correct, so if you wish to change it to eighteen, you should make the motion...
Can it be changed to fifteen, or would we have to change the whole thing? Which one's the easiest?
You would have to change the resolution, then, I, I think it depends on, on whether you wanna change the schedule and...
See, I figured fifteen brings the money in faster than pay off, you know? That's...
That's your call, but what I'm telling you is that they're incongruent, so something needs to change.
Yes, yes, I agree.
Well, it wouldn't be, you can't, so how could it be, one's fifteen and one's eighteen?
Well, fifteen, fifteen's all you can do on a street. The others, you can go as far as you want, and they make the eighteen, go along with the bond thing.
So, that's the law, you can go as far as the bond.
Okay, yeah, okay. As long as it, yeah, all right. So, and I just did fifteen altogether, so...
That's, that's not legally incorrect, so, but it, what I'm saying is that...
We would have to change that one.
One of them needs to change.
Well, and this, and this says, be it resolved as amended, so we have that right to amend that right now, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, Board members input, do you want, I, I put it fifteen because I figured we'd get our money faster, and that would pay off bonds faster. It's only three years, but those... And actually, I changed theirs to fifteen probably, too, because it's all in the same schedule, but that doesn't matter. Could we change that, said installments for Street Improvement District 2015-1, 2015 Water Sewer 2015-1, and just put them all up there, and make those due dates the same, and just eliminate that second part, would that be legal?
Yeah, yes, you could assess it that way, you could assess it, less years, you just could assess it more than those.
So, I'm proposing that we put all of those districts into that first section, and says seventeen, the one fifteen for fourteen years, and, and just eliminate that second section, or second part of section two. So, we wouldn't be going to eighteen years, we'd be going to fourteen, to fifteen years.
Whether whichever one we choose, changing that to a fifteen versus an eighteen, does that do anything financially to the city?
As, as Councilwoman Lawhead points out, it would bring in cash faster to the city. It would make it so that payments on the assessments would stop several years before payments on the bond stops, so we would have approximately three or four years after the assessments were all paid, where the final payments either, either would be made from, either, either it would allow us to pay it off earlier, but, or the more likely scenario would be that we would be making those payments from the revenues we are able to collect during those years without any special assessment monies coming in.
When we can put those special assessments into a CD, and then...
Into an interest-bearing account.
Yeah, and then we can pay off the bonds early, when we get some collected, and then we don't have those to pay it in.
Are, are the bonds not callable after five years?
They, I, I, three years, I think, isn't it?
Five, five is my understanding.
Okay, I talked to Brad Slaughter, it's three of them, yeah.
So, you don't see any disadvantage of moving the eighteen down to fifteen?
We did move them because property owners asked us to.
Moving the eighteen?
Yeah, originally, it was all fifteen, and property owners asked us to spread them out over as many years as possible, so that their payments would be lower.
If, if, if we have, spreading it out longer does make the payments from the taxpayers smaller each year on an annual basis.
The storm sewer and the sanitary sewer are the two that's involved, and the total on those is, one of them's only forty thousand, and the other one's a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, and the highest assessment on that's three hundred, thirty-five hundred, so in fifteen years, they're not gonna be making very good payments anyhow. I think the concern was about the concrete. See what I mean? The only two you can spread out are those two sewers, and they don't amount to more than, the total on the storm sewer is like thirty-five hundred dollars. So, if you put that out over eighteen years, you got some pretty small payments.
But if we have members of the community that want to stretch this out, is it really going to do much for us, you know what I mean? We're doing a lot, is, is it...
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, it's not a big issue.
It isn't.
Some taxpayers want that, I, it's not gonna cause us any issues, I think.
Then, all we gotta do is, is make the adjustment on the schedule, right?
Yeah, it's, it could be done the same way, so we just don't see why that's a issue.
Yeah.
Right.
Tom wants us to stay with eighteen.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, leave it in.
We're going eighteen?
Yep.
To the sewers. Okay.
At this point, you would prefer to either schedule, so maybe we need to make the motion. Since we adopted it with one schedule, we'll keep it with the other, and you already won, with regard to the Councilwoman Lawhead, so it needs to be made.
Councilwoman, please listen here.
Yes.
So, ahead, use the mic.
For your motion, if you wish to, to make it over eighteen years, you would want to specify in the motion that the schedule attached to it... For your motion, if, if it's the council's decision to, to make that motion over, or to, to add those installments for the water and the sanitary sewer over that eighteen years, you would want to specify in, in your motion that, that, I mean, so you're not able to amend it now, so you'd want to specify that yours will be amended to reflect the eighteen installments for those specific...
Do we need to make the motion to adopt one schedule or another before we do the resolution?
Make the motion to adopt the resolution with your attached schedule, with the caveat that it'll be...
With all of those things, with all of those things involved. Okay, I'm gonna, if everybody's ready, I'm going ahead then. So, Councilmember Lawhead is moving that the, the schedule prepared by Councilwoman Lawhead, I don't know how else to call it, Schedule Two or whatever, be adopted with the caveat that the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer columns will be changed to reflect an eighteen-year pay period instead of fifteen.
Make the motion to adopt the resolution with the schedules, your schedule attached...
I didn't do that?
No.
Okay, I make the motion to adopt the resolution, using my schedule, Lawhead's schedule, and changing the two sewer system payments to an eighteen-year schedule. Is that correct?
No, you don't have to do that, because it's already in the resolution, you have fifteen year up there for the...
But it, my, but my schedule does, we're changing my schedule. Does that cover everything?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, then, that's it. I make the motion, go from there. They were...
She's amended?
Yes.
There are motion, motion by Lawhead is second.
I'll second.
Motion by Lawhead, second by Make to amend Resolution Number 2018-16 to show what Councilwoman Lawhead's assessment schedule for eighteen years, is that correct?
So, it's motion to adopt the resolution with the schedule attached, as amended.
All right. Councilman Hillman?
Yes.
Hillman?
No.
Lawhead?
Yes.
Make?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
No.
Can I interject, the council or your lawyer sitting at the table? Do you think the mayor has authorized a vote in this issue?
Not, no.
It's just his opinion.
He's voicing, he's voicing.
He's voicing his opinion.
His support.
It will not be reflected in the minutes as a vote.
It shows in the minutes, either I have support or not support, in the middle. All right.
What else do we have to do?
All right. We're going to proceed to vote on the levies.
Is that right? Tom, that's a good question, the, the interest is in there, isn't it?
That was...
A new date.
She, she attached it, she attached it to the resolution.
So, we do not need another motion?
No, the other one's there.
Okay, but before, I thought you said two motions, that's what I asked you on this time, because the last time I was a little nervous.
We had, we had a new date, and the interest, but we separated that last round, okay?
Motion to adjourn, Board of Equalization.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll make the motion to adjourn as the Board of Equalization, and you can be as the council.
And I'll second.
All right. Councilman Hillman?
Yes.
Lawhead?
Yes.
Make?
Yes.
Hillman?
Yeah.
Mayor Strong?
Yes.
I wish to now open the recessed public meeting. Okay, there is, staff leaves, states of business for a claim here.
We need to approve a check. Saturday, the city is conducting the first ever triathlon, the Crofton Down Raisings. We need a check for seventy-five dollars cash, so that we can have a till, so that we can take money for meals and shirts, and so we're just asking the council to approve a check for, for cash.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
I'll make the motion to approve the cash, seventy-five dollars cash for Saturday.
Correct.
Yes.
I'll second.
Motion by Hillman, second by Make to authorize that, that said, the five dollar check for the triathlon fundraiser. Councilman Lawhead?
Yes.
Make?
Yes.
Hillman?
Yes.
Hillman?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
Yes.
Next meeting is... August eighth. August eighth. Motion to adjourn.
I make it.
Second.
Motion by Lawhead, second by Hillman, to adjourn, Councilman Lawhead?
Yes.
Make?
Yes.
Hillman?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?